Twenty first, two thousand twenty five, calling the meeting to order at six oh one P M. Item number one called to order, item two, roll call. All the aldermen are present. Uh, Maddie Palmquist will be uh joining us on Zoom. Our congratulations go out to her and her and Nick's uh new addition to their family, M J, their son, so we're happy for them. And item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, everyone. Item four, announcement regarding the changes in the city meeting email notifications, just uh doing our due diligence to let everybody know that's here and in the community that's watching us on any of our outlets that uh to join. Uh, the new notifications on the new website, please go to the new website to the bottom as notifications and it'll take you through the process of notifying you of all the different uh things that are available that we can send emails on, so please do that, we want to get as many people on there as possible. Thank you, item five, presentation by the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Stacy Kiwi. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Okay, good evening, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm just here to give another kind of chamber update, let you know what we have going on, where we're standing. Um, I first wanted to more so provide a clear picture of the value the chamber delivers um and our outreach efforts that we have really been focusing on, so. Number one is really the chamber's value to existing businesses. Um, you know, the chamber is a primary resource and connector for over four hundred and twenty member businesses, so they have membership with the chamber, um and that's not only in Wisconsin Rapids, but our service area, which consists of ten municipalities. Um, we provide advocacy efforts, so essentially amplifying the business voice at the local and state level. Uh, visibility and marketing with programs such as um our newer like curb front marketing, small business showcase, right, to help support and shop local. And then our newer program Business Spotlight Series, if you haven't seen our video series on that, it's getting a lot of traction, completely free, we just want um people to have another avenue to um look at all of our amazing businesses in the Wisconsin Rapids area. Um, also workforce and community development, um as many of you know, we provide the leadership cohorts, um adult and teen professional training and career development opportunities. And then business support and growth, um which include consultations, referrals, networking, resources that help businesses start, expand and thrive. Um, but our outreach goes beyond just our chamber members. Um, we're actively serving all businesses in the community that want to work with us. Um, so such as outreach visits to connect non-members as well as members with resources and partners all the time. Um, this is through phone, through visiting businesses, um support, support for entrepreneurs and startups um that are considering to start business in our area. And then regional and statewide level collaborations to bring outside resources to our community. So some specific examples of that would include, um which I think, I don't think a lot of people know, um I'm a part of the Business Management Advisory Committee for Midstate. And why, why is this important? Um, because I listen to what our businesses feedback um is for some of their struggles for up and coming workforce. And then we provide feedback to Midstate and they actually use that feedback, not just with me, but other businesses in the area, um to adjust their curriculum based on the needs of the local community. Um, I also am a part of the U W S P Chancellor's Advisory Council as well, so doing that exact same thing. Um, some also new and emerging opportunities and programs I had mentioned last time, but we weren't as far along as we are now. So we are um going to be very soon here introducing an entrepreneurial training program in partnership with Midstate Technical College. Um, so the whole purpose of this program is to equip local entrepreneurs with the tools to start and sustain successful businesses. So by the end of this program, they will have a finalized business plan, which is so, so important because anybody knows a lot of businesses are looking for funding and you can't get any type of funding unless you at least have a business plan to show. Um, it will also will bring in guest speakers related to each um session topic. So things such as, you know, the business planning, financial literacy, marketing, um and then those, the access to mentors. Um, and then also attached to that, this, if they complete this program, they will have the opportunity to apply for a grant that is funded by us. Um, we had some old revolving loan funds uh that, to be honest, it, it, it wasn't really working out well. Um, we're not a bank, if somebody doesn't pay, I'm going to be honest, the chamber is not going to sue a business, that would look absolutely terrible. So we're like, how can we still utilize these funds that we have? Because they're supposed to be going to businesses, so we thought of this grant uh program. So as long as they complete this, this training program, because we want to make sure that they're educated and they're ready to be successful in business, they can apply for a small, pretty much startup or expansion grant with us. I have also applied for additional grant funding through the W E D C to match those funds that we have, as well as um still working on ways for those, that funding to be sustainable, because all of that money will be going to those businesses, but right now I have majority of the funds in a C D, so at least it's partially um creating some sustainability. Um, so that, we're hoping to launch um starting in January, latest February. Um, also for economic development, um we play a central role in business retention, expansion and attraction. Um, and I want to just, just kind of talk to you a little bit about um some of those questions that I, that we ask businesses when we do business visits. So on page two of the pack, the packet that I gave out, um you'll see, I've been tracking this now two years in a row, and I believe somebody last year told me it'd be really great to see like this year's um percentages as well as last year, so that's what I put together. So if you'll see in um twenty twenty five so far, the top challenges facing businesses, um, marketing and competition, staffing, cost increases and inflation, and then mindset of locals. Um, and then for twenty twenty five so far, concerns with doing business in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, um advertising the area to bring in more qualified workers and industry. It's hard for small businesses to work with the city to start and expand business and city and residents being open to change. And then what businesses would like to see in regards um to community growth. More community events and recreational opportunities, more industry opportunities, revitalizing downtown and more collaboration with businesses and partners locally. So I think it's interesting, though, to look at from twenty twenty five and then look back twenty twenty four to see there's some similarities, um but there's a lot of things that are, have changed and or their focus is, is different. And then one other thing that I just wanted to mention, um the mayor and I have been working or were starting to work on a concept to work with industry leaders to build more of a business mindset within the entire community, so more to come on that, I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves, but we have some really great ideas that we're looking to expand upon that will really help the entire community. So, um, I just wanted to pause there, see if anybody had any questions, anything additionally that we could be doing. Any more information you'd like to see, like moving forward?
Stacy, on the Business Expo, can you explain that a little bit and where is that going to be held?
Oh, yeah, so our Business Expo is next week, um so it'll be next Tuesday, so October twenty eighth, I believe, two to six P M. at Bullseye Country Club. We have, well, we have almost forty businesses, businesses are still trying to get in on it, so I don't want to say the exact number because we're still allowing it in, but really trying to push that. Um, it's just a great way to connect with businesses all in one place. So whether it be just, the community is more than welcome to attend, anybody in any business, really um any part of the community. But the best part is the theme, it's Candyland, so it'll be really fun and the booths will also be judged on the booth, because, you know, got to have fun with it, so. Anybody else? Yeah?
Hi Stacy.
Hi.
I had a question regarding um the events, I see they're tracked here, um I've attended some of them. I had a question, how are, how is the chamber getting them out there and advertising them and tracking participants as well? Because it, it seems like attendance is maybe down compared to previous years, particularly like the parade and the Cranberry Blossom Festival. Uh, it, it's more of a trend than like, just like a flip, but is there anything we could do to?
Um, I mean, I would say like, let's just say Lunch by the River, totally depends on the day, right? One day, we had, and this was just me counting in one moment, over six hundred people there, so completely depends on the day. Um, Cranberry Blossom Festival, that was like ninety-five degrees, if you remember.
Yep.
It was hot, I, and we did everything possible. Um, thank you to Parks and Rec Department for letting us borrow your golf cart, because we um went around with the vendors and just gave away water, we went through ten cases. So heat, right, it, it, that one always depend, is dependent upon weather and there was still quite a bit of people, but if you look at when the weather is really nice, so Downtown Grand Affair, that was the most I think we have ever had. It was jam packed, um the partnership with Creepers Car Club, they had to turn vehicles away. We had to turn vendors away because we were just, we were maxed out, as well as the, the people that came were great. So, but in terms of advertising, um we have more recently um gotten on Instagram, we have a bigger presence on LinkedIn, um obviously Facebook. We also have monthly ads in the Business News, as well as we have a partnership with the City Times. Um, and radio, we're on the radio every other week. So we're, trust me, we're, we're trying every avenue and any other suggestions in term of marketing and advertising. Um, we're, yeah, we would love to do, we also print out, because there's still people that love paper flyers, so we print out a ton of them for the community events and we put them at the grocery stores, as well as even like Piggly Wiggly and Nacusa, they'll put them in um the bags. Um, I know we have to restock it at this um quality foods multiple times because those flyers are gone, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I uh just want to say thank you to Stacy and the work they do at the chamber. Uh, we just did Legislative Breakfast again this uh uh last Fridays and it was, it's always a, a good event and I think they work really hard to do what they can, it's not easy to quantify the effects that you have on the, the business community, which I know is the main thing, so I appreciate your work and the work of your team. Uh, this is uh something that we're talking about for budget, so if there are any questions, uh now would be the time to do that, um instead of having her back again. Uh, other than that, we'll let Stacy go, if there are no more questions. No. Alright, thank you Stacy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item five, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty five and September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty five, see attachments one and two, council, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
You're approving both of them at the same time, so I got a motion by Austin to approve both minutes at the same, in the same motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion in a second, or not motion, sorry, second the motion.
I got a second by Pluus. Seems like everybody's going to have to read. Alright, I got a motion by Aus, Austin, seconded by Pluus, are there any other questions or comments on the minutes for both meetings? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Maddie?
Aye.
Ayes have it, eight to zero, thank you. Alright, items, item seven, consider for appointment. Item seven, consider for appointment of regular member to the Water Works and Lighting Commission for a term expiring October first, twenty twenty-three. I'm sorry, twenty thirty, see attachment number three. Alright, at this time, I'm opening up the floor to nominations for Water Works and Lighting Commission.
I would nominate Rick Merden for the Commissioner for the Water Works and Lighting Commission. He's been on for quite a while, he's been doing a pretty good job for us.
So I have a nomination for Rick Merdan from Jeff Penscover, any other nominations? Alright, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the floor for nominations. And. Alright, so we have one uh motion on the floor, or nomination for Rick Merdan, uh at this point, where we will do a voice. No, we're, we're going to do it up on the board here, sorry, so. Alright. Alright, going back to voice then, sorry. Um, alright, so all those in favor of Rick Merdan being nominated to the Board of uh Water Works and Lighting Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you Maddie, sorry. Maddie, just, Maddie, did you say?
Yeah, I was on.
Okay. So, motion passes, eight ayes to zero nays, congratulations to Rick, thanks again for serving with us. Item seven, consider.
Welcome.
Item eight, consider for confirmation Mayor Zachar's appointments to various committees, commissions, boards, see attachment number four, I have on the library board, John Omernick at seven three zero Third Street South has appointed a regular member to replace Susan Faust to a term expiring seven one twenty-eight. And zoning Board of Appeals, Kevin Fagman at seven one zero Third Street South is appointed as a regular member to a term expiring eleven one twenty-two eight. Council, what are your wishes? I had a motion by Venomen to approve both appointments. Seconded by Tim. Alright, I got a motion by Venomen, seconded by Tim, um any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Alright. Maddie?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, eight to zero. Item nine, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting held on October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission met at four P M. on October sixth in City Hall, Council Chambers. Uh, a member or a quorum of commissioners uh was present and a list of others in attendance is available in the Community Development Department or Clerk's Office. Meeting was called to order at four P M. Item one was the approval of the report from the September eighth Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Tao to approve the report, seconded by Austin, that motion carried seven zero. Item two was a request from Michael Matsuk for a special exception to exceed the maximum amount of parking in front of a principal building in the General Commercial B two district at twenty-two oh one County Highway W. Staff provided a uh summary of the request and uh recommended approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a motion by Austin to approve the special exception, a second by Maroots, subject to uh the condition outlined in the staff report, that motion carried seven zero. Item three was a request from Kenneth Trapp to expand a non-conforming building for a vestibule addition on a commercial building at eighteen forty-one West Grand Avenue. Again, staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval with conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a motion by Maroots, seconded by Tao, to approve the request, subject to the two conditions outlined in the staff report, that motion carried seven zero. Item four was uh adjournment. Matt Zachar adjourned the meeting at four oh nine P M. With that, I submit uh the minutes for your approval, thank you.
Commission, or sorry, council, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Venomen, seconded by Penscover, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Maddie?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, ayes have it, eight ayes to, um, eight ayes, sorry, eight ayes to zero nays, motion passes. Item ten, consider for adoption the actions of the Standing Committees of the Common Council as follows. Finance and Property Committee meeting held on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, Mr. Katna.
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at five P M. on Tuesday, October seventh, in the Council Chambers at City Hall. I called the order, the meeting to order at five P M. Item two, commu, Community Development Department referral. A, consider a request from Community Development Department to apply for a Wisconsin Economic Development Cooperation Site Grant Assessment for Environmental Cleanup Site Activities at three thirty, Ninth Avenue South. Moved by Tim, seconded by Venomen to approve the request. Motion carried three zero. Community Development Director Kyle Kearns joined the meeting at this point. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Tim to reconsider the above item to allow Director Kearns to provide further information on this item, motion carried three zero. Moved by Tim, seconded by Venomen to approve the request from Community Development to apply for a Wisconsin Economic Development Cooperation Site Assessment Grant for environmental cleanup activities at the address listed in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, including a commitment for a twenty percent match. Motion carried two one with Katna voting in the negative. Item three, license and permits. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Venomen to consider all the aforementioned licenses and requests together, motion carried three zero. It's moved by Katna, seconded by Venomen to approve all of the aforementioned license requests as presented, motion carried three zero. Item four, consider for approval Budget Resolution Number Three. Moved by Venomen, seconded by Tim to approve Budget Resolution Number Three, motion carried three zero. Item five, audit of the bills. Consider approval for checks two seven two five eight to two seven five six three. Moved by Katna, seconded by Venomen to approve the checks, motion carried three zero. Item six, set next meeting date. The next regular meeting of the Finance and Property Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. For B, schedule Finance and Property Committee twenty twenty-six Budget Review Meetings. The initial Budget Review Meeting was held yesterday, October twentieth, at five P M. And the Public Safety Budget Review Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. Additional Budget Review Meetings are tentatively scheduled for October thirtieth, Novem, October thirtieth and November sixth, both at five P M. Final Budget Review Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. And C, set the date for twenty twenty-six Budget Public Hearing, the twenty twenty-six Budget Public Hearing is scheduled for Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. Item seven was adjournment, since there was no further business, I adjourned the meeting at five thirty P M. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
I got a motion by Katna to approve the minutes. I got a second by Penscover, any other questions or comments? Dennis?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, item number five, uh, could, Tim, could you maybe give us the, the total of, of the bills that were paid for the people in the audience and those that may be watching this on the screen, please? Thank you.
Oh, the amount of the check won was two million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and nineteen cents. Thank you, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I got a motion and a second. Go ahead and cast your ballots. Maddie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight ayes to zero nays. Thank you. Item B, Public Works Committee held on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, I will be reading these minutes. Meeting held October, Thursday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, called to order. Item one called to order, the meeting was called to order at five twenty P M. Item two, review and consider the proposal for Link Things from the Predictive Mobility Project Fund through the Wisconsin DOT's C R P program. Kurt Brandt with Link Things provided a presentation about their company and product. Motion by Austin to award their predictive mobility project to Link Things, seconded by Penscover, motion carried three to zero. Item three, review and consider changes to Chapter Seven Ordinance regarding eligibility for the Wisconsin D N R Recycling Grant. The update was provided and a draft ordinance will be provided at a near future meeting for consideration. No action was taken. Item four, discussing consider revision to all terrain vehicle A T Vs and U T Vs ordinance. The committee requested staff to review the areas bordering the neighboring communities and create a list of streets that are half in the city and streets that are half in the city but have adjacent properties in the neighboring community. Number of signs needed and any other landlocked areas, areas and notable items. This is your short, this report should be provided at a future meeting. Item five, review and consider approval of the State Municipal Financial Agreement for DOT project along uh South fifty-four, Second Avenue South between Seneca Road and South thirteen. Riverview Expressway, I D. six nine 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 dash zero three dash one nine slash eight nine. Motion by Penscover to approve the agreement for the project, seconded by Austin, motion carried three to zero. Item six, review and consider proposals for consulting services for signal infrastructure upgrades at A Street, East Riverview Expressway and Plover Road, Washington Street intersections as part of the DOT Signals and I T S Stand Alone Program. Motion by Austin to award the proposal to T A D I Inc. in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight, sorry, thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars, seconded by Palmquist, motion carried three to zero. Item seven, review and consider proposals for real estate acquisition services for the DOT's A Street project between Lakewood Lane and Witrock Avenue. Motion by Austin to award the proposal to Streetland L L C. in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, seconded by Penscover, motion carried three to zero. Item eight, consider a request to change the speed limit on Spring Street between Third Street North to Fifth Street North from thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. It was recommended to perform a speed study to review the eighty-fifth percentile speed prior to making a decision. It is expected this item will be considered in November, no action was taken. Item nine, review engineering and Street Department Monthly Activity Report, the reports were reviewed. Item ten, review the twenty twenty-five Construction Project Status Report, that report was reviewed. Review referral, or sorry, item eleven, review referral list, referral. Referral list was reviewed with no additions or subtractions. Item twelve, set next meeting date. Next regular meeting was set for November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five P M. Item thirteen, adjourned. Meeting was adjourned at six twenty-four P M. With that, I submit these minutes for your approval.
I'd like to hold out one.
All right. All right. Item. Item one.
Are you talking about the link things? I can get an old agenda.
Okay.
The revised agenda has number, it's number two. So it's the link things, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm holding out call to order, which would be odd. All right. Um, okay, so we're holding out item two, the review of link things. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right, so what are your wishes with the remainder of the report?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Tim to approve the minutes, holding out item two. And I got a second by Veneman. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Maddie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight aces to zero nades. Mr. Katna, item two?
Thank you. Item two. So for the Public Works Committee meeting, unfortunately, when Link Things was here presenting, their mic was off the whole time. So I tried to watch it. I don't know if anyone else did, but you can't hear anything that the gentlemen or gentlemen's are saying. I could only hear what the committee was saying. So I was hoping they would be here tonight. I don't know if they're here on the phone. I had, I had some questions. I was looking into this because this, this whole thing since the beginning is just, it, it seems like a great idea and a great technology. And then when you get the price tag, it, it's hard to wrap my mind around how the city of Wisconsin Rapids for rail predictability could possibly cost five hundred thousand dollars. And so I looked at the quote, I looked at the sensors. I cannot identify exactly what sensors they use, but I've found similar ones. And I mean, these type of sensors can range anywhere from five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. I'm guessing with what they use. Also, looking into Link Things a little more. In the Green Bay Gazette and W L U K Channel Eleven News, which is also out of Green Bay. Mr. Kurt Brandt, the C E O, is quoted to both those publications saying Link Things typically charges six thousand five hundred per crossing per year. And the rest of the article goes on to discuss essentially what they're doing in Rapids. They were going to install four sensors, or sensors at four crossings in Green Bay's downtown area. So sixty-five hundred per crossing per year. Somehow, this project is going to be five hundred thousand dollars in Rapids. It just doesn't make sense to me. It really never has. And if you look at the quote, three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of that quote is the sensor and assembly. So I, I think rail predictability would be a great thing. I, I don't know how it costs as much to have some sensors put in and some signs put up that indicate when a train's coming and then the use of an, an app that is already created and available. It's not like we're creating a new one. So I was hoping they would be here to speak to that tonight, but that's the information I found on it. I mean, in, otherwise, the rest, any other information about how Link Things does business, I would have had to do FOIA requests to get from other municipalities they've worked with, but this one was public. So I don't know if Joe, you had anything on that or?
So Link Things is on Zoom this evening. Kurt Brandt and John Cohen. And so they could, they could respond to some of those, those comments and questions if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Kurt. Were you able to hear any of the questions or comments that were proposed, Kurt? Anybody know what's happening right now?
Um, this is John. Kurt, we didn't get the right link. I got it. Um, I'll try and answer some of those. You can hear me okay?
We can hear you good, thank you.
Okay. There are fourteen sensors that are scheduled to be placed across Wisconsin Rapids. These are not run-of-the-mill sensors. They are proprietary sensors and they monitor six different elements. Feeding information to in-information traffic system and then to multiple applications. So it is not just a switch. These are actually sensors that were originally developed as part of an F thirty-five fighter project and have been reutilized, actually based on an incident that Kurt's family was involved in, where his mom was being transported to the hospital and she was delayed by a train and the fire department had no technology to know, you know, if they were going to be delayed or not. The project is for five years of service and that is all inclusive of the applications, the sensors, and the signs that are included in the proposal. I, I think that, you know, covers, you know, and I will say that in the study that was done, I believe there was about seven million dollars worth of return on investment when you looked at time delays, business delays, fuel, all those added together. You know, that's the return on, on the investment. And if you really look at, you know, comparing it to the cost of one, one overpass, that's, you know, tens of millions of dollars in five years worth of project planning time. And this, you know, is a really quick implementation turnaround once permitting, once the permitting is resolved, sensors are, you know, installed within the next one, two, three months. So operationally, this system, you know, could be up and running within months of permits being approved. Now, I see that there was a question about, you know, are you supposed to be looking at the app while you're driving? The app is, it is, first of all, will be for public safety. There is a public element to this as well. It is voice forward. So if you are running the app, you would hear a voice notification that a crossing is closed. It doesn't, you don't have to have the app forward to hear the voices that a crossing is occupied. So it just needs to be running in the background. You don't have to be looking at an app. Future applications also are to get this incorporated into navigation, Waze, Apple Maps, Google Maps. So that integration would be seamless with that as well. But currently, Link Things has its own standalone applications that run this technology and letting you know if crossings are clear or if they're occupied by a, a train. You know, the study that was done in Rapids had, I think, over one thousand respondents. And what was shocking to us is ninety-five percent of the public said that they did something really unsafe when they were approaching a crossing that was about to be occupied or occupied. And those obviously can have catastrophic results. And this makes for a much safer, much more efficient community and really avoids what we call congestion frustration. Kurt actually talked to some business owners in Wisconsin Rapids and asked a business owner if he'd ever been delayed by a train, and he said ever. And he said that literally, he was delayed by a train once. And it was so delayed that he just turned around and went home instead of his son going to suck darker practice. So that's, you know, really when you take into account all the delays, all the fuel, all the inefficiency, all the idling, that's where the return on investment comes in and thus, you know, outfitting fourteen crossings with these sensors, the applications, five years of, of service to come up with that number.
Thanks, John. Mr. Veneman?
Well, um, I don't know that we would benefit from it a great deal with the, the police department. You know, our officers have a lot to deal with in the car when they're responding to calls and, and things like that. And, you know, they can see when a, a train is coming and a crossing is, is blocked and they're trained how to get around those things. So, I mean, as far as the police department is concerned, I don't, I don't know that it would be a, a, a great benefit to us.
I was able to speak to Joe. He connected me to John and Kurt and my staff was able to kind of have a Zoom with them beforehand. Apologize, I didn't realize that this was a project kind of two years in the, in the making until we were asked our opinion at the last council. So I was able to kind of catch up to speed, talking to Joe on the project and the study that John and Kurt were able to do. I found some applicability and the ability to have what John was showing us is kind of a heads-up display. And that might differ from the police department in the sense that a lot of the times we are at the station and have different technology than the police department might be in their vehicle. And like Chief Hassan says, that was one of my concerns, you know, when I spoke on it last, was the amount of technology that we're inundated with in the vehicle while we're attempting to respond to an emergency. So that creates a, poses a hazard, but based on what John and Kurt were showing me and my staff, I feel like there was some use to this on the first responder aspect in the sense that a heads-up display could easily tell us where a crossing is jeopardized or based on some of the technology that they have, kind of where that train is headed and then we can kind of select a route differently. So from the fire department standpoint, I feel like there was value in the technology that they had and what they were proposing and how they laid it out. Obviously, there's, you know, the descriptive model of how, how it integrates with some of our technology and what that looks like. But Kurt and John being within the industry, I believe John was in the fire service as well. So he had a lot of that jargon that we were able to kind of go back and forth on. So I think there is, is value on, on our side of things.
Mr. Pluss?
I appreciate Mr. Cohen's explanation. I got a lot of respect for Mr. Cohen. With this project, I mean, we obviously have a major issue with, with train delays in this city. And I'm willing to use technology to, to try to alleviate some of that. I don't think this would necessarily alleviate the train delays. It may give some notification ahead of time. But I, I don't know if that notification would be as beneficial to as many people if it wasn't available through Apple Maps or Waze, the two navigation apps that people often use. If it's solely an app that somebody would have to know about to, to download and install and, and turn on notifications on their phone settings for that app, I think we're talking about a very limited number of people that would benefit from, from those notifications. So I mean, the, the, the project being close to, you know, two hundred and forty thousand and cost of the city of, you know, nearly forty thousand, I think those are monies we could spend relocating these tracks, which would guarantee reprieve from the delay trains.
Mr. Tim?
Just want to clarify a few things. Joe, we talked a little bit about this. You said it was a three-year contract and they just said five. Could you verify which one?
I believe it's a three-year contract.
Okay.
Unless, John, unless that's a mistake and it's, it's really a five-year contract, but.
Oh. I'll defer to Joe. I think he knows the contract. Sorry. Um, the other thing is that, yes, there are, there are roadside variable messaging signs as well. And those are intended to give drivers a heads-up and make a decision before they get to that crossing. And that's where the predictive element really comes into fruition. Typically, those signs are placed back a ways. So a driver doesn't have to approach the crossing to realize that it's occupied or about to be occupied. They are placed back so they can make a decision. And that's where the predictive element comes in because a train doesn't have to be there. It is predicted to be there by the time they travel from the sign to the crossing. And then it will be occupied. So the sign gives a message that gives them an option to go potentially a different route before they get to that crossing that's going to be occupied. So you have a, a, a variable amount via the app, via the variable message signs. And we continue to work to get this integrated into those navigation mapping systems as well.
Thank you. Mr. Katna?
I had a couple more here.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Tim.
And just to clarify, Joe, this was a hundred percent financed through a grant. And then after the three years, there would be a fee to the city that we could either say we're done, it didn't work, and cancel it or continue on at forty-nine thousand per year. Is that correct?
So it is a eighty, eighty-twenty cost share, eighty percent state-funded slash federal-funded dollars, twenty percent local cost. And so based upon the proposal that we have at, from Link Things for five hundred and ten thousand, that twenty percent from the city would be a hundred and two thousand dollars. And it would be funded through the tax incremental district.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Katna?
Thank you. So it's stated that there was going to be sensors at fourteen crossings? Which crossings?
Let's see here. I've got it here. So we'd have sensors at Fifth Avenue, Bono Avenue, Seventeenth Avenue, two of them on Seventeenth Avenue, First Street North, Engle Road, Industrial Street, Twenty-Fifth Avenue, Durbeauty Lane, High Street, West Grand. Durbeauty Lane, High Street, West Grand, Chase Street, Seventeenth Avenue South, and Gainer Avenue.
Thank you. Yeah, I've lived in this town my whole life, more than half of it was on the west side. And I think it's, I think it's a good concept. I don't know if it's just the way our town's set up or our tracks, but I don't think knowing about a train ahead of time or even seeing a, a sign on your way there really changes anything. You can see it quite a ways away and hear it before you get to the tracks and you get where you're going. Every time you do, you'll see people trying to navigate their way around and try to go to the direction the train is, go the opposite direction the train is to try to find a crossing that's going to open up quicker than the one they're at. I, I just don't know what the, the sensors in an app would really change about how people currently navigate the tracks. I also think it's gotten better since the mills closed, but again, it's the, it's the price tag, it's, I don't know if it's the right solution. And yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, John. Mr. Austin?
I would just respond to that last part. It is a, a solution though, to a problem that we've been talking about for many, many, many years. We've had a number of studies. It's about time, I feel, that we, we try to do something about it and I think this accomplishes it. So I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thanks, John. Thanks, Joe. Counsel, what are your wishes on item two?
Motion to approve.
Well, we actually have a motion by Tim to approve and a second by Austin, if everybody's okay with that. And then any other chance for questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Ms. Pomquist? Motion passes five As to three Nays. Pluus, Katna, and Pollock in the negative. Thank you. Item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held on October ninth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Pluus?
Thank you. The Human Resource Committee held a meeting on Thursday, October ninth, twenty twenty-five at four twenty PM in the council chambers at City Hall. All committee members were present. Also in attendance were Elder Person Tim, Finance Director Tim DeSorci, City Attorney Sue Schill, Human Resource Manager Ryan Hartman, Jennifer Cordy, Wendy Rosenthal, and Julie Tim. Number one on the agenda, call to order. Chairperson Pluus called the meeting to order at four twenty PM. Number two, the committee voted to go into closed session under section nineteen dot eighty-five subsection one, paragraph E, Wisconsin State statute, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will discuss negotiation and strategy regarding proposals for the city employee group health insurance for twenty twenty-six. Motion by Pollock, second by Katna to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in affirmative. Motion carried three zero. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and strategy regarding proposals for the city employee group health insurance for twenty twenty-six. Item number three on the agenda, the committee will, voted to return to open session. Motion was made by Pollock, second by Katna to return to open session. Motion carried three zero. Item number four, discussion and consider the approval of group health insurance plan for city employees effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion by Pluus, second by Pollock to approve a proposal for group health insurance for city employees with the Wisconsin Counties Association, WCA, Group Health Trust, which will result in a four point eight eight percent increase in health insurance premiums compared to the twenty twenty-five premium rates with a not to exceed increase in twenty twenty-seven of nine point five percent. Motion carried three zero. See attachments, M three health insurance benefit comparison and the WCA Group Health Trust Medical and Prescription Proposal. Item number five, discussion and consider the approval, the renewal of dental administration with Delta Dental effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion by Pluus, second by Katna to approve the renewal of the dental plan administration with Delta Dental effective January one, twenty twenty-six with dental administration costs of twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Motion carried three zero. Discussion and consideration for approval of the employee health in, item number six was discussion and consider the approval of employee health and dental insurance premium rates effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion by Katna, second by Pluus to approve the employee health and dental insurance premium rates as recommended effective January one, twenty twenty-six with an increase of the health insurance premiums of four point eight eight percent and an increase of the dental insurance premiums of seven point one percent. Motion carried three zero. See attachments to WCA Group Health Trust Medical and Prescription Proposal and M three twenty twenty-six dental plan. Item number seven, discuss and consider for approval the city sponsorship of a group vision health, group vision insurance through NVA with employees paying a hundred percent of the premiums effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion by Pluus, second by Pollock to approve the city sponsorship of group vision insurance through NVA under the full service plan with employees paying a hundred percent of the premiums effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion carried three zero. See attachment, M three voluntary vision plan. Item number eight, discuss and consider the approval of city sponsorship of group pet insurance through SPOT with employees paying a hundred percent of the premiums effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion by Pluus to approve the city sponsorship of group pet insurance through SPOT with employees paying a hundred percent of the premiums effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Motion died on the floor due to the lack of a second. See attachment, M three voluntary pet insurance. Item number nine, the committee may, will vote to go into closed session pursuant to section nineteen dot eight five subsection one, paragraph C of the Wisconsin State statutes, which reads considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluations, data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and pursuant to section nineteen dot eight five subsection one, paragraph F, which reads considering financial, medical, or social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. In closed session, the committee will discuss a request for an extension of sick leave for an employee pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. Motion by Pluus, second by Katna to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in affirmative. Motion carried three zero. In closed session, the committee discussed a request for an extension of sick leave for an employee pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. Item number ten, the committee will return to vote, return to open session. Motion by Pluus, second by Katna to return to open session. Motion carried three zero. Item number eleven, the committee may take action on sick leave requests. Motion by Pollock and second by Katna to approve a request for the extension of sick leave for an employee pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. Motion carried three zero. Item number twelve, announcement regarding the change in city meeting email notifications. Announcement was made regarding to the signup requirement to continue to receive city email notifications. Item number thirteen was adjournment. The committee, there being no further business before the committee, the meeting adjourned at five forty-one PM. With the reading of these minutes, I'd like to make a motion to approve these minutes withholding out number, item number eight.
All right. Holding out item number eight. I got a motion by Pluus, seconded by Pollock. Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Holding out item eight. What are your, we got a motion and a second on the rest of the votes. Go ahead and cast your votes. Ms. Pomquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight As to zero Nays. Mr. Pluus, item eight?
Before I mention number eight, I do want to say thank you to the Human Resource Department for the work they put in to the research and the work it takes to, to bargain and negotiate insurance rates, better insurance rates this year. We were looking at a nine point five percent increase potentially and we're, through their work and the work of M three, we were able to get it to, they were able to get it to four point eight eight percent. So a savings to all the taxpayers of Wisconsin Rapids. So nice work. Number eight, I wanted to leave out because it didn't get a second when it was up for a motion. And this was the city, and this is the first time the city of Wisconsin Rapids is willing to like sponsor a pet insurance. They had a lot of requests for the city to provide some kind of pet insurance. Our, the, the insurance broker that we used to, to do a lot of this research, M three was able to do some research and kind of validate some, you know, compare other pet insurances out there. So I think it's not a bad thing for the city to provide to employees as an option, but even though those employees are paying a hundred percent of the premiums, so it really is no cost to the taxpayer because the employee is paying that a hundred percent. But by going through this group sponsorship, the employee does receive a twenty percent discount provided to them by the company SPOT. So I guess if, I know Mr. Hartman was involved with, with that research in cooperation with M three, so I'd turn it over if you had anything you wanted to add to that pet insurance.
Thank you. No, I think you touched on it and I'll just reiterate that while we would sponsor it, it would be a hundred percent voluntary for the employees. They would assume a hundred percent of that premium. The benefit or caveat to the employee is that by us sponsoring the plan, they would receive a twenty percent discount versus if we didn't sponsor the plan, they went home tonight and said, I'm going to do it anyway. Obviously, it'd be a twenty percent higher. But that, that being said, our broker, Jennifer Cordy from M three is here. If she had anything to add regarding SPOT?
You need to speak it in the microphone, please. Make sure it's on.
Got it. Good evening. SPOT pet insurance or pet insurance period has become a topic of discussion when I went into benefits. Pet insurance was probably one of those that I didn't think it was ever coming. But post-COVID, people with their pets are very attached and as other expenses out there are increasing, so are the costs of, of pet insurance. Think about it as SPOT pet insurance, as Ryan said, it is a twenty percent discount by just having an employer sponsor it. This is not payroll deducted, so this is not a pre-tax deduction for this benefit. The employee has to set up for ACH deduction or they have to do a check. We're just providing them the avenue to enroll when they need to enroll. So if they get a new pet for Christmas, they can enroll in the benefit for January. It's not like an open enrollment like you would have with traditional employer-sponsored insurance. They can pick accident coverage, they can pick preventative benefits. So if they want just reimbursements for the annual things that they do for their pet, like their rabies vaccination, their annual exam, those kinds of things, they submit their explanation, their bill from the vet, and then they get paid a check reimbursement based on the services done. Cats, dogs, no exotic pets. And then you get to pick your benefit if there's an accident. So if you have a Labrador Retriever and they are known for torn ACLs and you wanted to pick a five thousand or a ten thousand benefit, your rates differentiate on that. But this is the only way to get a twenty percent discount is being offered through an employer. Your obligation is that you're just offering this plan through SPOT through the twenty percent off discount.
Thank you. Mr. Katna?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm on the HR committee. I didn't get a second. I think at that time, Mr. Pluus was the only person in favor of it. The reason I'm not in favor of it is I don't think it's the city sponsoring pet insurance and offering it to our employees. I think it's advertising, which you see with pet insurance since it's came about is just thrown in your face everywhere. I mean, your car insurance is going to offer you, your home insurance, Walmart Plus is going to offer you, everywhere is going to offer you pet insurance. And I don't think it's the city's place to advertise for a particular company. And from what I've read and heard about pet insurance, the coverage can be questionable. And I can't, I'm not going to speak specifically about SPOT, but pet insurance in general, I just don't think it's something we need to get into. I think our employees are probably offered it in a bunch of different avenues if it was something they were interested in, that we don't need to put one company to the front as a sponsor.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Pollock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If a person had this insurance and they turned in a claim, basically then where does the money come from? Or if, you know...
It comes from SPOT. They're an underwritten insurance company. They, it goes directly to them. They're a company that we vetted. We offer to pet insurance companies because this is one of those benefits that's up and coming and SPOT is the top one that we vet from them. So they would actually, the, the company themselves would reimburse that employee and send them a check. So it's from the premiums that they collect, just like any other insurance. Think of it like Aflac Accident Policy, but for pets. But SPOT's the insurance company versus Aflac.
Are there quite a few policies throughout the states that offer this?
Yeah, I would say there's more than there is in the past. I would say about six to eight percent of our employers across M three's demographic is now offering pet insurance. We just had a manufacturing company out of Wausau, Wisconsin, that offered pet insurance, about a thousand employees, so very large, and they had ten to fifteen employees take it. The benefit from the employer was while not all the employees took it, it was an intrinsic value from the employees. They thought it was great that we were offering it and allowed the opportunity that they could buy it at a discount.
Then is the owner responsible for all the paperwork and any added expense?
Correct.
The city would not have any, any cost involved with it?
Correct. And there would be no administration except for having the paperwork available or having it posted on your intranet would be the only thing to make it accessible for the employees to know, be aware of it. Most people just put it as a link on the intranet that they have for their employees to have as a resource, but there's no paper filing for the claims for the HR department, no payroll deduction. It's all direct billed to that employee.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to reiterate and add to, to the conversation. This was not something that we just thought, hey, this will be a good thing to do. This came from some employees. And, and keep in mind, the employees here at the city that also includes Water Works and Lighting Commission, Housing Authority. So when we hear back from the employees, the same way Vision Insurance, Vision Insurance, we're working with Jennifer and Wendy, they were able to go out and find that comprehensive NVA plan. Again, employee, employer sponsored but paid by the employee. So, and, and to Jennifer's point, we didn't, we didn't have, say we have seven hundred belly buttons on the plan, we didn't have two hundred and fifty people asked for pet insurance. But as we, you know, we, we try to listen to everybody and it's like, this could be a, like, like Jennifer said, an intrinsic value benefit. So we thought we'd put it out there and, and, you know, see what happens. So I appreciate the interest it has gathered and garnered to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your time. Thanks for coming. All right. Seeing no more questions or comments, I see I have a motion by Pluus to...
I make a motion to approve the city sponsorship of the group pet insurance with employees paying a hundred percent of the premiums effective January one, twenty twenty-six.
I got a motion by Pluus to approve, seconded by Veneman. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Ms. Pomquist?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six As to two Nays. Catna and Pollock in the negative. Thank you. Item 11, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports. They're there for you to read, and the department heads are there to ask questions or answer questions. Please reach out to them if you feel the need. Item 12, resolutions. Resolution authorizing city officials to submit an application for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Idol Site Grant for Improvements to 700 Durabody Lane, confirming council action taken at the council meeting on August 19th, 2025. Mr. Kearns, did you want to take this?
So I just want to thank Jennifer for amending the council agenda to get this on. It helps a local business owner, allows us to apply for a WDC grant to hopefully get this business owner $250,000 to put towards building renovations at 700 Durabody Lane. The council previously approved this back in August, and it was my mistake, I did not fully understand that the application required a resolution from council. So this is that resolution before you tonight. Again, this was already approved back in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, what are your wishes? I get a motion by Austin?
To the resolution?
To approve the resolution, seconded by Penscover. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight As to zero Nays. Item 13, referrals to committees. Discussing?
I have three referrals. Alderperson Tim made a referral to the Legislative Committee regarding a sex offender residency ordinance. Alderperson, Alderperson Penscover made a referral to the Finance and Property Committee for an update and discussion on the Safe Haven Baby Box. I believe that was taken up last night. And Alderperson Palmquist made a referral to the Planning Commission regarding summaries of monthly approvals and reviews.
Thank you. Item 14, adjournment. I will adjourn this meeting at 7:13 PM. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming.